Good morning. This is Wednesday, November 16, 2022. It is 9:00 a.m., and we will later have council time. But for right now, we have the 2023 Annual Budget Council Work Session. So this will be informative, and we look forward, Emily, to hearing what you and Kathleen have to tell us.
Good morning, Chair. I just want to say good morning as the Budget Director, and Kathleen is leading us, so I'm here to support as needed.
Great. Good morning, Council, and everybody else who has logged on. I know a lot of my colleagues are on this morning. And before we get started, I do just want to acknowledge all of our departments and offices for all the work they put into this annual budget process. It's, I think I said this last year, it is truly a labor of love. There's a lot of hours that go into this, a lot of thought, a lot of conversations. I, as much as it's like a marathon for the last month, month and a half for me, I really do appreciate it as I get to learn more and more about what we do and the services that we provide to the community. So with that said, if we could go to the next slide. So this morning, we are going over the 2023 annual budget process, reviewing some of the challenges that we're still facing in some of our funds. I will be presenting the recommendations to the Council, as well as a couple of amendments this morning. Talk about property tax levy options, and of course, receive feedback and questions from the Council as we move forward in this process. There are some key stakeholders that play a role in the budget process. The County Council are the county's legislative authority who actually adopts the policy on budget, as well as adopting the formal budget for 2023. The county manager receives and reviews the requests that are provided and recommends a balanced budget for Council's consideration. Our finance team also reviews all the requests through their lens. Our finance team includes our deputy treasurer, our finance director, budget director, and we've been including our HR director and deputy county manager recently as well. And of course, our departments and elected officials, they know their business. They know what's needed. They know what's required. And it is their responsibility and authority to present what they need in order to ensure that they're meeting regulations that by statute or for services provided by our community members. And of course, the Budget Office is the hub of our process. They keep me on track. They coordinate with all the departments and offices and run the reports, but they truly are the center of our budget process, and it's truly appreciated. So the calendar, this just shows that, again, this process takes months. The department and office's final submission date was the middle of August, which means they started working on this in June and July. We did meet with all the departments in October, and that included the Budget Office and myself. Met with every department to talk about their requests. All the reports and submissions have been posted on the Budget's website, and then the information that's being shared this morning is on our grid where we share all the presentations. Today is our work session. On Monday, December 5th, the elected officials will have an opportunity to provide testimony directly with the Council prior to the public testimony following the next day on Tuesday. And we always have Wednesday as a placeholder, but we've never had to use it historically. But if we do, if there's questions or amendments or things that we need to continue that conversation, we do have Wednesday, December 7th, set aside. So the county does use a baseline budgeting method. We use a traditional budgeting approach that focuses on the principles of transparency, communication, and collaboration in order to optimize our resource allocation throughout the county. Each year, the budget is prepared utilizing the baseline method, which starts with the current annual budget and applies some adjustments to that budget. We continue to face some challenges in our funds. And as you know from the supplemental budget, we did receive additional sales tax revenue that's been accounted for in the budget, and also the one-time ARPA funding that has actually assisted with our budget as well. With that, we have our general fund is one-time fund balances. There's not a lot of wiggle room for ongoing expenses. We do continue to have rising costs of salaries and benefits, inflation, capital projects funding, which we'll talk about a little bit this morning, increased in demand for services, and outdated systems and infrastructure, which also ties into some of our capital planning that we'll discuss. So for 2023, this shows the baseline revenue categories. So as you can see, the property taxes is the dark green on the screen that equates to about 40% of our revenues for general fund, or about $76 million. Our sales tax is the greenish-yellow color that equates about $60 million, or 30% of our general fund revenues. And then the rest of our revenues is about 29%. This is showing that same information broken out in the first year, but it does show the projected growths over the six-year forecast. And so you can see our property taxes. We are including a 2.5% increase over the next six years. This is based on historical numbers. Our sales tax, we are going back to a 4.2% increase. We did have the one-time adjustment in the supplemental that raised the baseline for 2023 to acknowledge that. And then you can see the rest of our funds here. We are not including an increase. We do have some decreases, actually, in other parts of our revenue. But just some examples of like charges for goods and services. This includes our jail bed revenues, the corrections, state corrections, which we are reducing our baseline for, I believe, by 3.5 million. Recording fees, court fines and fees, and other types of fees. And then the other revenues include licenses, permits, and fines. This is our general fund baseline expense category. And as you can see, the dark green and the other green-yellow color, that's employees. That is 72% of our expenses in the general fund. The dark-green-blueish color is the salaries, and the light green is our benefits. And then we also include on here our contingency, which is about 2% of our expense category. And basically, that is the amount that we use for any reclassifications, bargaining impacts, hiring at higher steps that was budgeted, and other employee benefit changes that we need to address. And then our services and transfers in intergovernmental. Services are like our professional services agreements. Inter-governmental are inter-local agreements. And please feel free to stop me if you have questions. I will take a couple breaths during this morning for myself and also to see if you have questions. Okay, so this is the general fund expense forecast. So basically, like with the revenues, this is just showing this in a different way. So the pie graph, and you can also see the projected growth in which we budget for. So for salaries, the increase over six years is a 3.5% per year. Benefits at 5%, contingencies about 4.3, and you can see the rest on there. So that just shows our six-year general fund expense forecast assumptions. So this is our general fund six-year forecast combining both the revenue and expenses. This is without any recommendations that we'll be showing this morning. Beginning fund balance is 82.1 million, or 82.19 million. Total revenue is about 191 million, and expenditures is about 177.5. You can see the fall supplemental change on here. The forecast modifiers just below the blue of just under 21,000. So that was what was adopted in the fall supplemental that had an ongoing impact. And then you can see our ending fund balance there of 96 million. And then towards the bottom, we have those projected, the ending fund balance compensate absences in our minimum fund balance policy, which would leave $62.2 million projected available fund balance. And Steph, if you could scroll down just a little bit on that. So the red number on the bottom, under the projected available fund balance, it says projected difference between ongoing revenues and expenses. So I just wanted to, and Emily added this to us, to the slide. We have not shared this before. But I mean, as you know, this is the first year we're not having a deficit going into 2023 as originally projected due to the one-time increases. But you can see this is where we have to be strategic and careful in what we're recommending and looking at moving forward, because there's really not a lot of ongoing funding that is available. Because if we were to do that, we would go into a deficit. So that 13.7 million, that is the ongoing revenues minus the ongoing expenses. And as you can see throughout the years, in six years, we are down from 13.7 down to 693,000. So, you know, if we had zero requests for the next six years, we will be in a deficit shortly after that. And so we do need to continue to look at our revenue streams and continue to look at internal efficiencies of where we can, you know, reduce expenditures and increase revenues.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Is there a target inflation rate that's built into all of this?
Not an inflation rate. I think it was addressed, well, no, because that was more on the revenue side. So no, it's just the increases on the side there that you see for the different line items for salary benefits and contingency.
So the actual expenses given inflation, the cost could be higher?
Yes.
Easily could be higher.
They could be, yes.
Okay.
Because our supplies and other expenses, we have an increase of 3%. And again, these are based on historical trends, and we look at them every year and monitor that because we are seeing reductions in some of our revenues. And of course, we're going to see some increases in our projects as well. So for 2023, there were 236 requests made from our departments. I think that's our record for an annual budget within Clark County. Seventeen were already approved by Council. Seventeen are budget-neutral, which means they have a revenue source tied to them. Technical adjustments just require coding changes and allocations. So we have three of those. There were no budget interventions requested this year. We have 40 carryforwards, so those are projects that have already been approved but haven't been fully spent. And so therefore, the unspent dollars will be moved forward or being requested to move forward into 2023. And we have 159 new requests. The recommendations for 2023 address urgent and immediate needs. There are a lot of recommendations that are not being recommended today, but will be looked at in the early 2023 year. It does not address many of the areas where funding will be needed in the future. We do have a couple amendments that will be presented today. I do, we'll talk about the amendments when we get there. And then in the first quarter 2023, or very shortly within that timeframe, we will be having a special supplemental hearing that will be specifically for capital items as we're finalizing our capital program and any outstanding jail items that we need to true up at the beginning of next year. So out of the 236 change requests that have been submitted, I'm recommending 171. Therefore, 65 of the 236 change requests are not recommended. I will provide a summary of the recommended and not recommended. I can tell you right now, though, that 51% of those items that are not being recommended are tied to the capital program. And then the recommendations presented for the 2023 annual budget, again, addresses urgent needs. That was our filter with the capital. As you know, we haven't had a program, and we're in the midst of developing one and getting that finalized. And so what we could move forward in 2023, we have pushed those forward. But those items that can't move forward because they create a safety issue or an urgent matter, those are the ones that are being recommended in the capital. And as this Council knows, we've been very conservative since, like, again, I'm going to say this again, our general fund looks good for the first time since I've been here in years. We've always had a deficit, and so our leaders and my coworkers here at the county, this is probably the first time that we're not trying to figure out how are we going to balance next year, which is a different mindset. Because every year, we're, you know, saving money at the end of the year just to ensure that we came in within budget. And so it's, we want to be strategic and mindful on how we're moving forward. So again, there are continued pressure on some of our funds with increase in demand for services, new mandates, rising costs, aging technology, infrastructure replacement, major maintenance, and others. Again, this is, you know, the maintenance, I can't say enough, in our capital. We've never had a plan, and so we really have been coming back to the Council when we can't patch the roof one more time to stop the water from flowing in. That literally happened for years in the courthouse. We have elevators that were breaking down, and we were not able to provide services. We just have not been doing the right preventative maintenance, not because staff didn't want to, but because we didn't have the funds to support that and a program to support that. The recommendations that I always look at as well, want to make sure that it's sustainable. I want to make sure that we're not next year, you know, having to cut because of what's being recommended today, and that it's feasible. And then the criteria considerations, you know, maintain the appropriate reserves. As we've learned with the pandemic and other emergencies that may come up, we need to make sure that we have an adequate level of reserves to continue operation for a couple of months if something catastrophic happens in our county. I also want to minimize the impact to services and residents. This is really important. We're here to provide a service, and that is our goal. And we need to ensure that we can maintain what we're currently doing, if not increase what we're doing. And then also, again, addressing any critical needs and liabilities that we may be facing. So these are just a summary of the recommendations that we'll go over today. And again, this is a balanced budget that's being recommended to the Council. Again, the reserve per county policy for a general fund, looking at our property tax levy options, recognition of estimated revenues related to the public safety sales tax that our voters approved in August of this year, increasing our sales tax revenue by 4.2% in alignment with what we've seen historically. And then you can see the dollar amounts per the different funds, which will actually show on most of these funds of six-year forecast in this presentation. So at this time, before I go into what is being recommended and not recommended, I just wanted to open it up for Council to see if there's any questions at this time. Okay, I'm not hearing any. And just for Council's consideration, as well as the public who may be watching, this slide right here just shows where you can find the details of what's being recommended and not being recommended. There's summary reports that the Budget Office has done, as well as the original requests that departments have submitted. I am going to go into this. So again, 171 or 72.5% of the requests received this year are being recommended, and 27.5 of the requests are not being recommended. I'm going to try to categorize these and do a quick summary on those that are the budget-neutral, carryforward, previously approved. I'll summarize those. And then with the new requests, I will also try to categorize them a little bit. I'm not going to read them one by one, but I will highlight ones that I think that the community and the Council may be interested in. So with budget-neutral, we had 17 requests, so about 7%. Eight of those were grants, including grants from AOC, which is the Missouri Sheriff's Office of Courts, the court-appointed special advocate, or CASA, the juvenile detention alternatives grants, sex to grants, and other grants. Consolidating funds from mental health and alcohol and drug services into behavioral health. We did have a couple FTE change, one that was moving in FTE, and another was just addressing their infixing and distribution of their account codes. And then two that were not recommended were, in the budget-neutral, were project positions, because we have the ability to cover that within the current budget. Carryforwards, we had 40 requests, or 17%. Twenty-two of the 40 are ARPA-related funding. That includes rural broadband positions added by funding through ARPA, space planning, case backlog. Eighteen capital needs out of the 40 were recommended. This includes ADA upgrades in the jail, a remodel with CRESSA, facilities, carryforward, projects, fleet, prosecuting prosecutor's case management system. And then there were four grants, including ones from ecology that were COVID-related grants and community services, and some other low-income household water assistance program grants. Did you hear something? Okay. Sorry, I thought I had heard something that wasn't right, but that's okay. Previously approved by Council, there were 17 requests, or 7%. Five of those were ARPA funding as well. And that included like the North County EMS station, delinquent property tax support. We did have also a few grants that were in the previously approved, the Shoreline Master Department of Ecology Grant, Washington Association of Sheriff's Office and Police, the jail COVID-19 grant for them, homebuyer-down payment assistant and public safety sales tax revenue budget. Technical adjustments, there were three. Again, these were position allocation alignments, coding corrections, and the workers' comp fund. And then for new requests, there's 159 of those are new requests. 67.4% of our requests are new requests. Twenty-six of those requests, or just over 16%, are capital projects. And these include some safety issues, such as the doors at our Mayberry Center. They're roll-up doors, and they're about ready to fall. And we don't want to have employees or those who are working at the Mayberry Center to be impacted. The Franklin Building exterior stairwell has some structural deficits that we need to adhere to, our jail capacity and renovations, the engineering architect, which Council reviewed last night. Camp Bonneville parks maintenance equipment. This will help with the fire line and ensuring that the residents that live by Camp Bonneville, that we're doing our due diligence to support them. Severe winter emergency equipment, body cameras is also included. This, I will note on this one, there were two requests for the body cameras. The first one was the carryforward, which is actually this one. It's not considered a carryforward because we're identifying public safety sales tax as a revenue source as well. So we want to make, that's a change to what Council approved. And the Sheriff's Office also provided a budget package for body cameras, and they included tasers as well. That's not being recommended today. It's the original body camera one. And then we will review all of that for the first quarter supplemental. Other internal controls are mandated areas, such as key control systems, clean building initiatives, and others. Annual updates, such as the TIP stormwater capital plan and fleet and fairgrounds, vehicle replacement, and ticket booths. So those were a part of our capital piece that was included or recommended in the 2023 budget. Then we have some annual updates that we see every year. The indirect cost allocation update, our park impact budget update, block grants, insurance updates, postage is still going up, association dues, the jail bed revenue update, that again is being included in the baseline moving forward, and then our annual IT increases that we see for software maintenance, on-base licensing fees, and others. We did have four new ARPA requests in the 2023 recommended budget. One is the community grant funds allocation. There is a position that's currently being paid for by ARPA to help support the ARPA program, so that is being recommended. And then I know the Council's been having conversations regarding a possible pool in North Clark County, and so we do have that as a placeholder as well. There were a few positions that are being recommended. Again, I look at sustainability, internal equity, countywide services, and ensuring that we can continue these services. So there were some project positions that don't have a current budget capacity that are being recommended. One is being a facilities painter. We've been using temps and outsides, so this actually may save us some money moving forward, and we will continue to track that. Animal control, again, this one also is a project position. They want to use this position to actually get more revenue in with pet licensing. So we will evaluate that funding source over the next two years in the hopes that that revenue source pays for the position and also brings in additional revenue. And then there was one in transportation as well that was recommended. For permanent positions, there's seven and a half FTE. About four of them are in the general fund. The first one is for the assessors' office, the senior and disabled tax exemption program. They have had a two-year project position in that role, and this recommendation is to continue as a permanent position. Secondly, a management analyst in the treasurer's office is being recommended. The prosecuting attorney requested that half, there's a .5 FTE, and to increase that to 1.0 FTE in their office. We do have some in the road maintenance, the peer court. We're recommending a DISC position that is ending their two-year project position, and this will maintain an ongoing FTE for them as well. A grants accounting project assistant. This is being recommended contingent on grant funding paying for the position, and we will monitor that with our finance folks. Public Works Medians Project Permanent Position. This is budget-neutral as well. It's already in baseline in the clean water budget. Community Services, Mental Health Sales Tax, Behavioral Health Funding Housing Position. And then we have some in our Parks and Lands Capital Planning. There was a request from the treasurer's office to have a general fund baseline revenue realignment, and this actually reduces the general fund by 1.1 million to account for property tax interest and penalty revenues. The property tax levy options, I am recommending the 1% general fund and bank capacity. The average cost per household with the average medium home of $525,000 is $7.19 per year. And that includes both the bank capacity and the 1%. This allows us to help continue funding our current services and help bring in that revenue that we much needed. Again, without the one-time ARPA funding and the unprecedented sales tax increase that we have received over the last couple of years, we would have been having a different conversation today in that we would be providing many reduction scenarios in order to provide a balanced budget for 2023. And I will share also, and I know, I think I've shared this with the Council in the last year. This is based on the 2022. So the County Council has foregone the 1% increase six out of the past 10 years, and that's between 2012 and 2022. And the cumulative impact for the general fund was $25.3 million less in the general fund. And then moving forward, the estimated impact for 2023 through 2027 would be an additional $14.1 million reduction in the general fund. The road fund, I am recommending also the 1% and the bank capacity. Again, the average cost per household, based on the medium amount of $525,000, is $26.55 per year. And I will be sharing the six-year forecast for this as well. But there is, we don't have a negative, but you can see the reduction of our available fund balance in the road fund. So without increasing, and we're going to be in a position in a few years where we're not going to be able to maintain our roads to an acceptable level or add any additional capital projects that would be paid for out of the road fund. The MPD Parks Fund, I'm also recommending a 1% for MPD. And again, we don't have the six-year forecast for the parks today, but that will be in front of Council shortly. Again, based on the average household median price of $525,000, the annual amount is 90 cents per year. And that's, that fund does have, it's not sustainable, I'll say that. And we'll have further conversation on that as well. Moving on, and I will just say also, for conservation futures, which is the other option for 1%, there is no recommendation. I'm not recommending a conservation increase. We have enough money in fund balance to adequately provide services and make decisions in 2023. So moving on to the not recommended budget requests. There were 65 requests, or about 27.5% of the items submitted. 33 or 51% are directly related to capital projects. Again, only urgent needs for being recommended now. We're developing a capital plan. We'll go into that a little bit later on the slide. We'll go into that a little bit later on the slides. We're including items such as carpet replacement, window treatments, repairs to drainage system, vehicle, or equipment requests. And I worked with departments and Public Works was able to also provide me information of like, yeah, we can push this out. Worked with facilities, yeah, this is on urgent needs. So those, some of those items are not being recommended. Most of these will be addressed in the supplemental in the fall 2020, I'm sorry, in the first quarter 2023. But I will say, we have extremely more needs than we have funding. So what will be coming in front of council the first quarter 2023 will be based on prioritization and available funding, but we will be developing that longer-term project. There is a couple training budgets requests that I'm not recommending right now. One is the Fire Marshal was asking to cover some classes that they take, and also community planning. And so the Fire Marshal's office has been able to absorb that in their budget previously. I will look at other sources for both that request as well as community planning's requests moving forward. Overtime budget is not being recommended. The Otters Office did finish the overtime audit. The next step is for our finance team to review and develop recommendations on the path forward. With that said, we will continue to cover overtime in the sheriff's office and juvenile. They both were asking for overtime with vacancy savings or address it in a supplemental if there's not enough money for them to cover that. And then we'll come up with a longer-term plan that is sustainable and makes sense through the finance team and the two departments and bring that back to council. Again, project positions were not recommended if they had existing budgets and therefore does not need council approval. Did ask to convert project positions to permanent positions and add an additional FTE. One position, permanent position was recommended, as I mentioned, the DISC position, which is a Department Information Services Coordinator. Two of the project positions have another year left on their position, so I'm recommending them one more year in the project position. One of the positions that was being asked for is currently being used and filled through a temporary employee, and I'm recommending to continue to do that right now. Again, looking at internal equity and long-term sustainability in countywide services. And then finally, after brainstorming and a collaborative effort and conversations with Superior Court, they did have a vacant position of their admin assistance position, and they will be reclassifying, and actually I think they already have done this, reclassifying that to vacant position to a management analyst senior position, which was currently a project position the last two years. So they were able to continue that function from a project to permanent. And I also let them know, and I have shared this with council when we're talking about public safety sales tax, that might be a conversation that council wants to continue to have to see if we want to use some of those revenues to help actually pay for additional staffing in the Superior Court. And we'll include some of them in our public safety sales tax conversations. As I mentioned earlier, I did one of their positions. They originally asked for two, they had two project positions. But through our conversations, the assessor is reviewing other technical avenues that may actually increase their efficiency. Therefore, they're okay with not recommending the second position as a residential appraisal, appraiser position, it's not needed at this time. District Court had a request for FTE. Initially, I was not recommending the change because it had a bargaining impact that had not been solidified, but they're actually looking at repurposing that current vacant position now to another position, so it's not needed at this time. And then the sheriff's office, we had a few there as well. So some of the items that are not being recommended are considered capital and will be considered in the first quarter. That includes workforce management software. This might be a good program also for juvenile to use as well, but we will do that evaluation and bring it back in the first quarter. And then some kitchen items out at the jail work center. They also had jail-related items that will be reviewed and considered in the first quarter, including the food prep and laundry alternatives. They did mention they had a dollar amount that they submitted, but they, there really wasn't any research done to support that dollar amount. And so, and I, with the transition, that's one that we'll look at, but we're not going to rush that process either, and we haven't had the time with the new leadership team coming in for January one to do that recommendation. So we will be looking at that. So as a reminder, the services have changed since COVID because the lower-level inmates are no longer incarcerated in the jail who are actually helping with the food prep. And so they don't have any inmates that can help with that, and with their staffing levels low as well. Again, I mentioned the funding of the body camera and dash cameras and tasers that they put in for submissions. So again, just as a reminder, I'm recommending moving forward with the original requests that we had, and then we'll continue to look at the tasers and possibly bring that back in first quarter. And then finally, the sheriff's office has asked for new patrol enforcement positions. I believe there is twelve. I am not recommending them at this time, and the reason being is the city of Vancouver has started their conversations about addressing, starting an annexation process that could go out to the full boundary in the city of Vancouver. Approximately seventy percent of our sheriff's office calls are within the Vancouver urban growth area. So I'm not recommending this request because I want to lessen the impact on staff. I do understand that annexations can take a couple of years or longer, but I think we can hopefully partner with the city of Vancouver to come up with an agreement where we can potentially start transferring vacant positions over the years through attrition so that we can have a more streamlined process of handing off services to the city. That is a summary of the budget request of what is being recommended and not being recommended. Does council have any questions?
Yes, ma'am, I do. So the one percent property tax increase would generate, cost a residence about seven dollars and nineteen cents per year, that's what I heard. And then roads would be about twenty-six fifty-five. And then parks was about ninety cents. Was there one other that I'm missing?
Conservation futures, and that's not being recommended.
Okay, but so there's just the three that are being recommended?
That's correct.
And so I'd have to do some really quick math, but we're talking thirty-three, thirty-four dollars and change?
Per year.
Per year, per property or residence or household or?
Yeah, and it's based, again, on the five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar median house. No other questions now? If you can go to the next slide, please. So this is the general fund forecast that has the recommendations included. This does include the one percent levy increase and the bank capacity. So as you can see, again, the beginning fund balance on the top is eighty-two-point-one million. The adopted change request for the recommendations is twenty-point-six million. And as you can see moving forward, that has an ongoing impact of five-point-eight million. So that leads with a projecting ending fund balance of about seventy-five million. And then you can see again, below the fund balance, the compensated absences, again, just as a reminder, that's the amount that we put aside for if people leave. I think it's twenty-five percent of our financial liability if everybody left, the cash outs for their PTO vacation sick leave. And then the minimum fund balance policy, which is about sixty days operating expenses approximately, is thirty-one-point-two, and that's set by policy. So that does have the projected available fund balance of forty-one-point-seven. And I can't say this enough, this does not include the capital. Because again, if we included all the capital, we would be in a deficit. If we include all the recommendations, we'll be in a deficit. So this number will be used up for capital for the one-time expenses. And the one percent revenue would bring in about seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand per year, and then that's addition every year moving forward. So if we were, it would equate to additional four-point-three-six million by 2028 in six Any questions on this slide? So the next, if I have my, my pronoun wrong. Okay, so this one is the same slide, but it does not include the one percent property tax and the bank capacity. So as you can see, the twenty, twenty-point-six million is now twenty-one-point-nine million, which is, would be the adopted changes that's recommended with the arrow. So it's now twenty-one-point-nine million. And then the seven-hundred, sorry, I'm a little slow, my math here. So you can see that the amounts have, are starting to decrease on the revenue side based on the prior slide. I think our next six-year forecast that we're showing is the mental health sales tax fund. And so this year, I think we're adding some of our six-year forecasts and trying to make this a trend for all of our major funds to be able to show that six-year forecast. I think we've got most of them. I know there's one that we weren't quite ready that I'll call out. But this, this is the recommended, part of this was because, you know, with COVID, there were, we had contractors who couldn't provide the services that were awarded funding, and then, and there, we paused on the process. So this has a twenty-one-point-two-million-dollar beginning fund balance. And I will, we'll go into the next couple of slides to actually talk about the recommendations, which is a fifteen-million-dollar recommendations with a two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-dollar ongoing. And I will actually, I'll summarize the next few slides, but I know Chair Bowerman and Councilor Mevage are actually on this committee that helps provide the recommendations to me, to the council for final consideration in the budget. So there is one request that was previously approved by council that's being considered, and this is for the Lincoln Place Two. I'm providing two-point-two-million dollars to the Vancouver Housing Authority. And then we had, through the mental health sales tax advisory board recommendations, they had four internal county departments or elected offices that they're recommending, and eight external grants that's being recommended. So just a little history, and this is out there on our website under the counselor's page of the mental health sales tax. This advisory board was formed in February of 2018 to create a formal process for collecting and evaluating new funding requests and provide the advisory input into the county manager's recommendations in the budget to the council. So for the internal departments and elected offices, CJC is being recommended of a hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. This is for support for trauma-focused mental health treatment. Behavioral health fund housing position for a hundred-and-thirty thousand. This is a position in community services, working with service providers. District Court, this is a two-year grant totaling a hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand, just over a hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand, and this is meant to support the mental health court team. And then a program manager for jail re-entry in the sheriff's office in the jail. And that's for eighty-three-thousand dollars for 2023 because their anticipated hiring is not until March, and then a hundred-and-four thousand ongoing. For the external partners on the next slide, there is eight-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand being recommended to Columbia Mental Health, River Mental Health. This is a heightened level of case management services focusing on unsheltered homeless individuals with behavioral health conditions. Sixty thousand to Lifeline Connections. They provide drug treatment programs for women and their children. So this is an outdoor safe play area for children. Seventy-five thousand dollars for Lifeline Connections, and this is the emphasis with individuals who are at risk of dropping out of different programs. And this has animal therapy that will help provide those additional resources. Additionally, there's about five-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand to CBAB. This is recovering housing of long and temporary beds. Three-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand for Recovery Cafe. This is a peer support recovery group in, for those who are in recovery at the VHA facilities. Two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand for ESC 112, which is the Educational Services District 112, to support children between birth and five years who do not have a formal childcare options for them. Two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand for Helping Professionals Wellness Center. It's outpatient mental health treatment. The money will be used to increase peer support before, during, and after mental health treatment, substance abuse, and other services. And then seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand to Unity Center. This group works with vulnerable youth and the Money for Kids in Search of Success mentoring program for youth age twelve to eighteen. They provide services during school breaks, summer camps, and after-school programs. And I guess I would ask if Chair Bowerman or Councilor Mevage has anything to add on this, being that you were part of the mental health sales tax advisory board?
I don't have anything to add. We just felt like the applications were very good, and we were actually very selective in choosing the ones that really met with the mission and purpose of that sales tax.
The only additional comment I'd make is we came very close to targets on what's is sustainable and what's not. And I appreciate you putting in the additional slides of some of these funds. You know, we, we don't intend to have a huge fund balance. We want to get the money out into the community, so we do need to address what that fund balance should be every year. And the only other point I want to make is, you know, although all of these funds are stove-piped, and I know you're making recommendations particularly on the general fund and road fund, but even though they're stove-piped, you know, our commitment of some of these funds to our jail services, for instance, can help limit or alleviate some of the funds that may have otherwise come out of the general funds, primarily in mental health and healthcare in general as we parse through budgets. So I did want to point that out. I think we did a good job on sorting through all the applications, and this is a good use. We do have a fund balance that I think we should bring down in future spending, but obviously it all needs to be sustainable, but this is a great use, or great uses of this, this sales tax fund.
And thank you, Councilor Mevage, for bringing up the jail. So yes, we will be coming back to council and having conversations about utilizing mental health sales tax funding for programs in the jail. And of course, that will go to, we had a brief conversation with the advisory board already, and then we can address the budget technical piece in that first quarter supplemental. So thank you for bringing that up. So the next slide is the road fund six-year forecast. And so there is, it's separated out, so they do have the general revenues at the top of sixty million, and then the general expenses of fifty-point-four million. The blue line shows the impact to this road fund. And then below is the transportation improvement revenue and the transportation improvement expenses as well, and I believe that this is in alignment with what council approved last night. And then what I did at the bottom, so the top part includes the one percent and the bank capacity that's being recommended. So you can see the projected available fund balance of twenty-eight-point-five-eight million. And then in six years, it would be reduced down to twenty-nine-point-four million. And that is due to the fact that our revenues, our expenses are exceeding our revenues. So it does have a decline over the years. If the council chose to only go with a one percent and no bank capacity, you can see the impact, it's about two million in 2023, but if you go out six years, it reduces that fund to six-point-nine million dollars. And then with no one percent, it reduces out six years to four-point-one-three million. And it's important to note that this fund helps maintain our roads, so this will compromise if we don't have the adequate funding, we may not be able to maintain our roads. Additionally, it also pays for capital improvement, so we would be at risk in meeting obligations for capital improvements on that as well. Funding and code, I think we do have a draft six-year forecast, but it's not finalized yet, so you'll see that in the 2024 budget process. But for just a summary- yet. So you'll see that in the 2024 budget process. But for just a summary, the 25.5 million is the estimated beginning fund balance for the Planning and Code Fund. The revenue budget was 13 million, expense budget 14.8. And the request that's before council for consideration would be $70,000 impact to this fund. And then they do have a policy for reserve amount of 7 million, which leaves us a projected available fund balance of 3.6 million. The next, excuse me, the next six-year forecast is REIT One. So REIT One, as a reminder, is less restrictive of the two REIT funds. REIT Two is more restrictive. And this, you can see that there is a beginning fund balance of 6.67 million. There's, it's a projected growth of 6% in the REIT fund. The beginning, the revenues, total revenues are just over $9 million. The expenses about 4.7. And then what's being recommended is a one-time funding of one point, just under 1.1 million, which leaves us a projecting and then fund balance of 9.9 million. This policy has not been formally adopted by council yet, but we're still just putting a placeholder in there until council, we get that in front of council, which would be a $4.7 million fund balance. And then the available fund balance would be 5.12. And this is part of some of the revenues that we could use in our capital planning. So while it does, you can see it's increasing at a pretty healthy rate over the next six years. I anticipate this is going to be easily used up as we're looking and identifying revenue sources for capital. So the second one is REIT Two Funding. Again, this is a more restrictive funding. The beginning fund balance is 17.6 million, the revenues of 8 million, the recommendations is about 10.9 million, and then projecting fund balance of 13 million. The minimum fund balance for policy is 1 million. So that allows for a projected available fund balance of 12.8 million after the recommendations. So we wanted to talk a little bit about the 2023 capital budget. So Questica, our Budget Office NIT did do a lot of work this last year to incorporate into the capital budgeting model, or include capital budgeting in Questica. This is our first time that we've had a budget model that includes capital. This is, you know, capital budgeting is based on best practices. We should be looking at adopting comprehensive, fiscally sustainable, multi-year capital plans to ensure effective management of capital assets. And as we all know, if we don't address capital needs, it just costs more money as we put them off versus doing preventative maintenance or putting them on a schedule in which they're being planned for. So as you see here, the operating budget, plans for the ongoing and one-time spending, and the means to pay for that. The financial plan details the projected revenues for a defined period of time. And then the capital, again, is the one-time, but often multi-year, capital projects and acquisitions. Next slide, please. So just, oh, sorry, I got my papers messed up. The 2023 Capital Budget Threshold. So this is what qualifies to be a capital project. So we have new construction, expansion, renovation, replacement projects for our existing facilities that have to cost at least 25,000. That's the same for data systems and software costs of more than 25,000. Purchasing a machinery and equipment would be considered capital at more than 25,000, and any major maintenance or rehab of existing facilities. So we did coordinate or bring together a group, which is the Capital Planning Advisory Committee. This includes members of different diverse departments, including the Budget Office, our Information Technology Office, community planning, public works, facilities, and the finance team, with the goal of developing and implementing a formal, long-range capital master plan and a three-to-five capital improvement plan. And I do want to say, while this team is, you know, limited and does not include all of our departments, all of our departments have been great at turning in capital projects that they know of so that we can incorporate them into the plan. And then once we have a draft plan, prioritization, revenue identified, we will be bringing that back to our senior leadership team. So the full, all the departments will have an opportunity to review, provide input prior to that plan coming to council. So these departments specifically have already a stake in capital planning. All of these have them and different, and that's why they were chosen for that reason. And then, of course, the finance team with their diverse lens for the financial side as well. So again, the recommendations that are happening for, that's being recommended as council for 2023 today is the, anything that's urgent or immediate needs. And then we will continue with our developments. Like I said, we've already identified all the projects, but sometimes we, you know, people haven't been thinking in that way. So there's still ones trickling in. We've identified part of the priorities, and that we have a criteria on how they're being prioritized. So our next step also is to start identifying the revenue sources, that we can start looking at that based on the prioritization. There'll definitely be more to come as we move into the first quarter of next year. So this, again, is, I think this is a slide earlier as well. I just wanted to remind council and the community that all of these reports, the details of all the budget submissions are already online. The capital projects list is out there as well. So in that little red box at the bottom, you can, there's, that's the link to all the information and more detailed information. And I'll just say, if there's anybody from the community that has questions about any of these, feel free, feel free to reach out to me, and we'll be more than happy to help navigate through that. So we do have a couple of amendments this morning that have not been included in the reports, nor in the, any of the forecasts. The first one is the 2023 Parks and Land Capital Improvement Program Budget. So council did approve that plan, I believe, at two council meetings ago, two or three. I had not recommended it because we have deadlines in which I have to finish my recommendations so budget can run the reports. And so I did not recommend it as I wanted to make sure that I could revisit the financial piece with our public works finance team, our countywide finance team, and our budget office. So we've been able to do that. And so this is recommending formally the budget piece to the program that council has already reviewed and approved during the hearing. So this would be the technical piece. And you will be seeing a six-year forecast, and we'll be having conversations in the, in the weeks to come on the Parks and Land budget. The second item is the Jail Services. And this is for the FTE for the correction, or for the corrections officers. It's FTE for some of the Support Guild, and it's the budget associated with that. And I'm going to ask Michelle or Emily, because I haven't seen the final number. So this, I will tell you, Amber and our Jail Services Team have met with the Sheriff's Office Leadership Team, and they're in agreement with this. So this is, has been agreed upon by both departments. But I wanted to see if we actually had, like, the number of FTE in the budget. And if not, I will have it for you at the hearing.
Kathleen, we were able to get that. The total FTE being moved is 194. And then the expense budget being moved is about 29.7 million. And there are some associated revenues with this, about 5.0, almost 6 million in revenues. All of that's being moved from their existing cost centers and the Department of the Sheriff into this new Jail Services Department.
Thank you, Emily. And so I wanted to say that because, as you can see in here, there's zeros. And the reason why there's zeros is just because it's budget neutral. We're just moving it to a new department. But I think it's important to at least put some context around that. And then there was one slide that's not on here today that I am considering putting on the December 6 hearing, which is a placeholder package for compensation. And the reason being is that council knows we're doing a countywide compensation and classification review. Whatever is recommended out of that process still needs to come to council for approval. But I am considering putting a placeholder for that study to be considered for council. So that would be an amendment coming on December 6. Okay, so we're going to move into, and we're getting close to the end, so please bear with me. Property tax levies, overview options, and the recommendations. So this is how the property taxes are calculated. And I know my colleagues are online as well and are more than happy to help answer any questions. But the property taxes are, one of the primary funding sources, as you know, that's provided by, to local governments. Our assessor and treasurer administer the property tax. They don't determine the billing amount. The assessor values or assesses your property, and the treasurer collects the property tax. And as you can see through the Washington State, they have a budget-based system on the property tax. And the equation is there on how property taxes are calculated, which is the levy amount divided by assessed value, which equates to the levy rate. So the county property taxes, excuse me, the county property taxes, we have the general fund that also include the subordinate levies of mental health, developmental disabilities, and veterans assistance, road fund, conservation features, the Greater Parks District. The Greater Parks District will be a separate hearing that you'll have on December 6. Again, I'm not recommending conservation features, just general fund and the road fund. So this shows the 2023 property tax options. So just as a reference, you have the four levies noted on the side in the pink salmon color. And then 2022, that's just summarized what council approved and did in 2022, which was the 1% for parks. And then the 2023 choices is the 0%, a 1%, and the bank capacity. The top green shows what the revenue would be coming in with those options. So the 1% for general fund, it would equate to just over $727,000 in revenue to the general fund. The road fund, 400, just over 450,000, and so forth. The bottom part of the green, that's the impact on the median household of $525,000. And that's where we come up with the numbers that council ran under Red Back under. So if you see under the general fund, the far right is the bank capacity. See, you can't take bank capacity if you don't approve the 1%. So the recommendation is the 1% plus the bank capacity, and that's $7.19 per year for the median household of 525,000. The road fund is the $26.55 per year to take the 1% in bank capacity. And then the parks fund is 90 cents per year. So that is how much a household will increase would happen per year based on that $525,000. This is just a summary that I've already shared of what is being recommended today. So all of them are being recommended except conservation features. This is the formulas and the information that we'll see here shortly. But this is the general fund subordinate levies, and this is the flat rate formulas. So if you could go on to the next slide. So this is the general fund subordinate levy option. So this is what the council chose last year. So it's a proportional rate and what the amount was for the three subordinate levies to the general fund. So the next slide shows two options that council has. So I'll start with what's being recommended. What is being recommended is Option B, general fund bank capacity. If that is adopted and approved by council, that would mean that the tan color on the far right would be the amount that would go towards these three subordinate levies. So the 858,784, and then the veterans assistance, 772,905. The other options that council could have is on the Option B column, is if council did not approve the 1%, it would be the general fund 0%. Or if it was just the 1% and not bank capacity, that would be the dollar amount that would go to the subordinate levies. The other option is under Option A, which is based on a flat rate, the 2023 flat rate, and that, you can see, is just over a million dollars for all three. And that flat rate was two slides ago where it shows the calculation and how it is supported. Is there any questions on this? I do have very highly intelligent people who understand and work with these daily that I know can help answer if I don't have the answer.
If I could ask just a clarifying question on the general fund 0%. Those, that one column would be what we would expect if we did not take any of the bank capacity or 1% increases?
Yes, that is correct. And the 0% is, would be no additional increase from last year. And it also incorporates any new construction, which is why there's still a dollar amount. But yes, that would be correct. The 0% for general fund would still equate to those dollar amounts for these subordinate levies. Okay, not hearing any other questions. Again, this is just the website on the annual budget process that anybody can go on and take a look at all the reports, the calendar, what we're doing in this conversation. Next slide, to the end. So the next steps are, answer any questions that council may have today, and receive any feedback, anything else that we need to look at, do some research. Again, I know my colleagues are wrong as well to answer questions. And again, we have the public hearing with, on, starting on December 5, on Monday, with our elected officials' testimony. On Tuesday, we'll have the public hearing here at 10 o'clock on December 6, and then if needed, on Wednesday the Sabbath.
Madam Chair, I have a brief comment or question?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So Kathleen, I did get, in our discussion the other day, Michael Fish responded to some of my questions regarding basically taking some sampling of common homes within the county. How have taxes increased over the last decade or decade and a half? And he provided me a set of slides that I think each of the counselors should see, you know, includes all the taxing districts. And, you know, we talk in terms often of, well, this is only going to increase $7.16 for every household per year, and we have a structural deficit. These slides kind of paint a broader, a clearer picture of what that impact is on your average taxpayer. And essentially, in the last 16 years, a typical home will be paying nearly twice as many taxes as they were back in 2009. The, the only question I had for Michael Fish from the Assessor's Office that I wasn't clear on is whether the, the column of the tax bill for that sample home included all of the taxing districts, you know, from, because obviously, schools, things that people vote on and put in place. I'm not sure that that last column included all the separate tax issues that people are saddled with when you have put a percentage against $1,000 of assessed value. So my first ask is that all of those slides that Michael provided to me go to every counselor. And then the one question, does the next to last column for 2021 that shows the sample tax amount on a, on a, on a particular home, does that include all of the assessed valued taxing district that they would have to pay? Thank you.
Good morning, Counselor Mevage and other counselors, county manager. Yes, I can gladly share this information with all the council members. I think it's a good look at a typical house in Clark County. Also, that column is representative of all of our taxing districts. So that is a full property tax bill. It includes any special assessments and other fees as well that's collected on that property tax bill. It includes any special assessments and other fees as well that's collected on that property tax bill.
Thanks for that clarification. Thanks for all that additional work you did.
Madam Chair, may I make some general comments?
Go ahead, Counselor Rylender.
So I just want to sort of get this off my chest because there's, I have these really mixed feelings on this. I think that I want to acknowledge the fact that I think the county has historically been doing a terrific job in managing the budget, keeping control of the numbers, et cetera. And I really appreciate that. I also see and understand the need for additional money is given inflation and other pressures, retention of employees. And if we don't have the money, then, then we have some extreme challenges. It's clear that not taking some of the increases in the past has exacerbated or will contribute to that. I, I get all of those things. And so saying that, I, on the other side, being a taxpayer, property owner myself within the county, I just need, I'm compelled to express some of the other general concerns that either I have or I've heard. And these include things like currently we're looking at a 40-year high inflation rate. And it doesn't look like it's going to slow down a lot in the next couple of years. We've got historic high fuel prices, wages, wage growth does not appear to be matching cost increase for, for the common person. People who are on fixed income are continuing to slide further down the bike. Property values are certainly slowing at this particular point, depending on which economic reports you read could slip. And if they decline in, then we could have a significant recession. And that's the whole question, are we in a recession now or are going to move to one in 2023? I just read an article about, from Amazon, saying that they expect considerable slowing in online purchasing and they didn't meet their target goals. And their stock price is down dramatically. So there's concern, will there be less discretionary spending, which would affect our, our tax revenue from our sales tax? We've got a pending gasoline tax increase in 2023 because of the carbon initiative in the state of the Washington, which could be substantial as much as 46 cents a gallon that people haven't even seen. And just a side note, I'm concerned that in the last decade, that the state revenue has increased from 30 billion to over 62, 64 billion dollars, which siphons off capability to raise taxes and raise money on a local basis. So there's, there's all these other things that are weighing, and I think some of those are significant. So even if the dollar amounts are small, and I really think that they are incredibly small. And yet people are so pressed and stressed at this particular point without any, any near-term visibility for improvements that I think they're going to scream bloody murder on any sort of a taxing increase. So I'm personally weighing all of those things in there, but I feel compelled to get them out on the table to make sure that, that the public is being heard. Thank you.
Kathleen, if I could just kind of take a moment to address kind of what we are seeing and what can impact the county in the future. One of the things that I think the council should be aware of is that the, you know, because the higher interest rates, we've actually seen a slowdown in new construction. Our number of permits is about half of what it was last year. And so a lot of what we've been able to do in terms of growing the county has been based upon that new construction revenue. And if new construction revenue is slowing down, we're not going to have that new construction coming in. And one of the things about property taxes is it is stable. And with that lower new construction, that also means a lot of that sales tax revenue that also comes from the building of new homes will also be impacted. And one of the things is, is when you don't take the full capacity, and I'm not telling the council, take the bank capacity or not, that is your choice. But whenever you do that, you do have compounding impacts of it. So for example, I'm just going to use the road fund, for example. Any new construction, if you have a 4% bank capacity like in the road fund, for every dollar you could get new construction, you can now only get 96 cents. You know, and so you're limiting the amount of new construction dollars that you can bring in. And so we do have this challenge of what's going on in the market with the new construction and the impact of it going forward. So I just think that's something the council should be aware of. We had a lot of new construction this year, but we are seeing less permits and that can impact the amount of new construction that we have going on in the future. The other thing to be aware of is the city of Vancouver, their citizens have already improved the humongous tax, property tax increase. They're probably going to see $2,000 or $250 per $500,000 house based upon what they approve. Richfield School District also improved increases in, in property taxes. And so the voters are out there, they are approving property taxes. It's just really a question of, you know, what is the county going to do? And, you know, really taking the impact of the 1% is out of 100, every hundred dollars you're talking about a dime. And so in the overall tax bill and what's going on is actually a very, very small percent that the council can actually impact in that overall property tax bill. So that's just kind of wanted to give you all an overall context of what we're seeing coming forward in the 2023 tax year and, you know, probably the 2024 for new construction. Thank you.
Well, I'll fill a pause here. Thanks for that view. You know, and I share Dick's concern about inflation and recession and, you know, it's about, it's split among the experts as to whether or not 2023 is going to be a far worse year. You know, mortgage rates are going way up, property sales are going to slow way down. All of these things are right now in the froth of a crashing wave and we really don't know even from the experts. So one point I want to make is thank you Kathleen, Amber and Emily and all your teams. That, this is why we have professionals working our budget. Thank you. We need professionals and you're doing a great job. I just want to point out as to the last comment from the assessor. I, you know, looking at the six-year forecasts across all of the funds through 2028, right now, they are healthy. So yeah, things crash and burn and all of our sales tax depletes. You know, yeah, we, next year, we're going to have a tougher budget to look at. And I think we should always keep an open mind to taxing more if we need to. The voters just put in an additional tax on themselves with the public's safety sales tax. Thank you. We need that money and we're going to put it to good use. But right now, I think with the projections that we have, we don't need to tax anything additional. I, I ask everyone to look at those slides that Michael Fish put together because they paint a broader picture of the impact on your average homeowner in our county. Thank you.
Michael, I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly. I did send that email to the council already. But did you say the increases are not Clark County increases per se, but all of the districts that would have a tax?
That's correct. It's across all our taxing districts, including Clark County, our school districts, fire districts, port, library, et cetera.
Yeah. And I don't know if there is a way to pull out the county portion. I mean, I was able to share the, the dollar amount in which we didn't collect when the 1% wasn't taken. But is there a way to translate that to a homeowner with the same way that you did that one?
Absolutely. I'm happy to look at that closer.
And I, I think I touched on this earlier as well, when we're talking about our expenses and the majority of it being people in the general fund. I also want to make sure it's clear as well to council that 70% of the general fund is for law and justice. And so if we don't have a sustainable general fund, it will impact law and justice. But, you know, we're like, and to your point, Counselor Medici, we do have the public safety sales tax and, and we'll be utilizing that and providing recommendations to the council.
Could I ask the assessor a question? So Peter, has the, has the state on the, on the school property tax shifted over to a fixed budget amount rather than just tied to property value increases? That was due to change, wasn't it?
Yes, it did change. Counselor.
So is that, is that in 2022 or is it 2023?
It did it in this year's taxes.
Okay, so but prior to that, it was tied to property value increases. So property taxes for state for schools was increasing as property values increased until it went to a fixed budget. Is that correct?
Yeah, that was correct.
Thank you. I guess my point is that, that the county's numbers look really small and that's terrific. But to Counselor Medici's comment and others, there is this cumulative impact on all the different levies and fire districts, school districts cumulatively, which add up on top of. So while in isolation, some of these are indeed very small altogether, sometimes they create a challenge.
Yeah, and your point, you know, Counselor Rylender, those schools have increased, you know, the taxes so much. And it has nothing to do with the council and stuff, but, you know, the tax bill does come from Clark County. And that's why I like to give you heads up, like the city of Vancouver, that, you know, that voting for the fire. People are going to see huge property tax increases coming in the property tax bills. You're probably going to hear a lot about them. And, you know, in some ways you kind of, we're used to it in our office because, you know, we, we get all those calls and you have to kind of point them back to, yeah, this is where the increases are happening. Because, you know, at the, the county has to worry about the county funds and what they're doing. But, you know, I do want you to realize in that context, there is a lot of other property taxes increases going up. And, you know, the fact that we do have that slowing in new construction, which is also going to impact our property taxes going forward.
Peter, I'm glad you mentioned it because, you know, it's on the tax bill and you've pointed this out before. Most of those assessments, people voted on themselves. It wasn't the county council that put that burden on them. And that's why the, these pie charts of the taxing districts are, are really interesting. The public should look at them that Michael just presented to us. But if you just look on your tax bill and you look at all of the, the biggest portion of your tax bill is not from the county. It's, it's on levies that the public has voted in themselves.
And that's why Counselor maybe D Y A pointed out is really when you're talking about the 1%, you're talking about a dime out of a hundred dollars of a tax bill. So $99.90, the council has zero impact over that at all. The voters or, you know, each of their individual elected representatives, a lot, the state's school districts are the main drivers of that, those increases in property taxes and will continue to be drivers of the property tax increases.
Michael, question. The information that Kathleen just sent that, that you had provided is, is very interesting. I'm wondering if the pie charts that are included here are also shared with residents. I don't recall seeing those pie charts on my property tax bill. Are they though?
So there, I, I do know, I, the property tax bill comes from the treasurer's office. And I do think
That's correct, yes.
By the pie chart. But there is reports put out annually by the assessor's office that's available on our website that really kind of shows where all the dollars are, are going and what tax district is increasing property taxes by, you know, what percentage. And that is available out on our website. We do try to provide that information. We, Chair Bowerman, a lot, we typically, if there's huge property taxes increase, the treasurer and I have gone out and done public meetings in the affected areas and say, yeah, you know, your property taxes are going to go up and here's why. We'll probably do next year, we'll probably do them in the city of Vancouver because people will have voted on the increase for fire. But by the time the tax bill comes out, they'll have forgotten that they voted for it. Just get the bill and say, why is it going up so much? And it's like, well, remember when you voted on it, you know, back in '22? Well, it's, you know, '23 now, now you're going to see it. So we do, we
The reason that I mention this is I think that the spreadsheets and the lists of tax increases are certainly very informative where it says, you know, the dollar change and the percentage change. But there is something for the public to be understood when seeing it in a, a pie chart such as you provided here. And I think that is very illustrative for people's understanding. And we might give consideration to how we make this available on a wider basis.
Chair Bowerman, Mark Gessway just reminded me that the pie charts are actually in their annual financial reports that were presented to council and are currently on the auditor's website.
Which is all great, but probably not something that most individuals who are paying taxes seek out. And I, you know, yet with our property tax bill, we do have the list and we, we do see the change coded there. I mean, it is shown, but again, there is something very special about the communication pictorially. And we've, we've known that in, in how monetary information can best be understood for a lot of years. And this is just very communicative. I think it's very good and for not just the, the council, but for the public.
Yeah, Chair Bowerman, I mean, if come the, you know, next year when we have those, we'd be, you know, willing to talk to you how we present it, how it works out to the public when we're trying to get that message out there. Because, you know, the biggest challenge that I think we have is the county is when that tax bill comes, they're making the check out to Clark County. And so they just kind of assume everything in that tax bill is, you know, driven by Clark County. And unfortunately, when tax districts go out and, you know, I'll say like school districts and stuff, a lot of times they'll try and focus people on the rate, you know, instead of actually the additional dollar amounts that they're asking. A lot of times they'll go out there and market it as saying, hey, we're keeping the rate the same. So we're not raising your property taxes. But the truth is they're, what they're asking is for is going from like eight million to 10 million, right? Well, that's a 25% property tax increase, but they'll couch it in different ways to try to push it back on, you know, the county because obviously they're trying to get their particular ballot measure passed. So, you know, those are some of kind of the challenges that we deal with and why we typically, when we see big property tax increases. In fact, I actually have a map here, I don't know if you guys can see it, that we've gone out and done for a number of years where we show exactly where the property tax increases are happening. So different people in the communities, different communities know. But one of the challenges with tax bills is not everyone gets them because a lot of people pay it through their mortgage. And when they find out that there's a property tax increase, it's when they get that mortgage bill, which happens, you know, typically around July, not the same time the tax bills go out. So if there's something that the council be interested in doing maybe separately to get that information out, you know, we would love to talk and see what we can do. Probably, you know, coming up soon, because soon as all the taxing districts approve their budgets, then we'll know in January exactly what the impact's going to be for, you know, property owners in terms of their taxes and whose taxes are going to go up and why.
And your map is good because that is pictorial. And your map is good because that is pictorial, as are the pie charts. And that is more communicative than lists of numbers to the people in general. So thank you for working with that to make it more easily understood by the public.
You're welcome.
So that concludes the work session unless there's any other questions or comments from council.
So if there are no further questions, then that does conclude the work session. Is that the case? I just wanted to verify with everybody. And hearing no additions or corrections to what has gone on so far, it will be time to adjourn this session and move into council time.